Attending the meeting are, from my left, Glenn Copelman.
It's right there.
It's gonna be another. Glenn Copelman, a member. Steve Padfield, current alternate. Peter Coffin, member. Lynn Merrill, chairman chair. Robin Carter, our administrative assistant. Chris Bauschaw, vice chair. Peter Bakie, member. And Robin Gay, member. And joining us tonight is Glenn Greenwood, who is our town planner. Yeah, we'll do that in a minute. So, before we go any further, some things have changed in our membership since our last meeting. Chris Bauschaw has been appointed selectman for the town of Kingston. And he is now the selectman's planning board rep. And we've checked all of the laws and such, and it appears that he can remain as vice chair. So, he will be doing this all.
Really?
So, that means that we need to say thank you to Chuck Hart for serving with us so far this year as our former select board chair, representative.
Madam Chair.
Yeah.
I don't know where you checked and what information you got, but I don't know about vice chair, but...
It's fine if he's never going to stand in his chair.
That's right, because...
That's the issue.
Oh, okay. So, he can't be chair?
Yeah. Yeah, he can't be chair because it's silent on vice chair, but yeah, I don't, I think that's where the problem is.
All right. Then we'll have to elect a new vice chair, which we can do, that's not a problem. So, that'll be on the agenda tonight. Also on the agenda tonight is filling Chris Bauschaw's representative, his seat sitting on the planning board. So, we need to have a new planning board member, and we need to have a new vice chair.
Are you up for motions at this point?
No, not quite.
All right.
I also want to introduce our new administrative assistant, Robin Carter, who started a few weeks ago and is rapidly coming up to speed.
Two Robins.
Two Robins, two Peters, two Glance, one.
Oh, it is crazy.
And I knew at one recovery we were asking him his last name is on the minutes.
So, there's the issue. It's an interesting board membership we have here. So, I think the first thing I would like to do is to entertain a motion to replace Chris Bauschaw at Chris's physician as planning board member. Do I have any motions? Yes.
I would make a motion as chair, the seat be replaced by Steve Padfield. If he saw him, let me do so.
Second.
Okay. Do we have any other nominees?
And who's second? Okay, I'll learn your voices, don't worry.
Glenn C.
Glenn C.
Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Post. That will be unanimous, and congratulations. Thank you for your services, an alternate, and we're pleased to have you come on board as a member. So, that takes care of that. Now, do we have a nomination for vice chair? Yes?
I would nominate Robin as vice chair, if she would accept the decision.
Do we have a second? Have you feel, you'll, I see deer in the hay.
Well, you just walked in off the street. Um, I guess I am concerned that I am frequently not here on time. And should the meeting commence on time and I not be here, that would be problematic. So, the optics of doubt are not lost on me.
Okay. Any other nominees?
I can ask, man, if you're willing now to step back in to that role, to enroll as vice chair, please?
Well, that would depend on how the board members feel, because I know there was a board member sitting over there that were very much opposed to me outrunning this board. So, depending on how they feel, um, we can open it up for discussion.
Well, put in a nomination.
Do we have a second?
Actually, we don't, actually, we don't even need a second.
No, you know, you're...
No, that's right. Yes, that's not a nomination.
Okay, we have a nominee.
We take all nominations and then versus I take the nomination.
But I would like to open it up for discussion, because if there are, if there are still issues lingering out there, I'm not touching those.
I would say my personal feelings is, I think folks, you know, I know you kind of felt like a mutiny happened, but I think it was people looking for a change in general. I still think you have a bunch of fantastic institutional knowledge. You obviously have a bunch of fantastic experience of, you know, running the meetings and doing that stuff. And I know I would have no issue with you continuing, you know, continuing those types of roles. So, that's my person, that's my feelings on that.
I appreciate that, and, and I had no, I had no issue with that being the feeling of the board or of members. That, my issue was that it was being dealt with outside of the public forum. It was being done in public, and it was being done in a way that I was not comfortable with. So, that was my issue. Not, not that, you know, boards should have a change, I mean, that's the way these things work. Peter, I'd like to hear from you.
I have not a problem with it. I think it was maybe the comments were made about the speed of the meetings. That might have been what it is. Said, sometimes, Glenn, when we stay here till 11:30, 12 o'clock at night, a little ridiculous. We took care of that by changing times. So, I think that was a big issue that I had, was it seemed like they went on and on and on. And then we took care of that night. And multiple times through the past years I've been on this board, I've requested to have that timer put on this meeting. Finally, it did, because we had enough members that came onto the board with that agreement. So, it was actually finally come from a vote on it. And that's how that all, that's how it all transpired. So, I think it was just the time periods that I had an issue with, with this board and the meetings. You know, we're all volunteers, and 11:30, 12 o'clock at night, we all have to get to our own, or most of us do. So, that was the issue I had. So, I have not a problem.
Anyone else? I don't think there's anyone more qualified to serve in their role than Glenn.
No more discussion? There's no more discussion, all those in favor?
Aye. What's up? So, did you take, did you take the nomination when you kind of stepped back, because you were...
I will.
Which, that is, sorry, okay.
Okay.
I took it out when she was talking, I took it easy.
I took it easy.
I just wanted to verify, because I changed how we received it.
Yeah.
And I thought that...
Thank you, I thought she was stepping back as well.
That's right.
Okay, I'm totally sorry. So, all those in favor of Glenn Copelman serving as vice chair?
Aye.
And that would be unanimous. So, we now have a full board again. But we are missing alternates. So, if anyone knows of anyone who would like to serve in that position, or if anybody is watching the meeting and you'd like to serve, we'd very much welcome your participation.
We two, I mean, we look...
Two.
Yes.
Well, we have space for more than one.
Yeah. I think that we authorize ourselves for three alternates?
I think so.
I think so, so...
I think three. So, great. Okay, so that takes care of the first order of business. Check one off the list. Um, why don't we kind of go out of order here a little bit? Let's do the, before we do correspondence, let's do the minutes of the meetings. So, on the August 2nd meeting, there was still, after we had sat through that evening and sort of worked on those minutes at our last meeting, there was one last name missing. So, I looked it up in the files, and we added that name to the minutes. So, I think the August 2nd minutes are now complete. Did we officially vote on those at the last meeting?
I didn't.
I don't, no, I don't think we did the August 2nd. I think it was the one before that.
It was July.
When we had a lot of issues with that.
Yeah.
We ended up figuring it into the second.
Right.
And so, I know it's on the August 2nd, we still need to return meetings at such and such PM.
And we don't know when we will start.
Don't know that.
We can't do that one, because we don't know when. And on the August 2nd, um, in the paragraph under the sale of town owned land, the letter was received from Amy Gabriel. So, if we can add that, I think those minutes are now complete. And there was some other little blanks here that we don't need to fill in, they can just be eliminated.
Make a motion to approve the minutes from August 2nd.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
How about the August 16th minutes?
I want to stake anything from those, because I want to...
I know I wrote on those.
And again, I know there is, um... This is 16th of the 2nd, but I think we've got last names now entirely. There's one point which said Mr. Coffin said something, and then Lynn said something else. So, the...
I think those are nominees.
And Lynn noted an exception, so I would just, for consistency's sake, excuse Ms. Lynn.
And that was...
That's page three of August 16th.
Page three?
The bottom of page three.
Oh, there it is. The third last line, page three.
So, it was just a...
Yep. Okay. And on page eight, maybe you can help us with this, Glenn. Uh, Glenn Greenwood. Under Stony Brook Lane, the applicant requesting a conditional use permit for the construction of an ADU in a detached, detached structure. Mr. Blank Houston of 456 Main Street and Tom Johnson of 9 Stony Brook. Do we happen to know what Mr. Houston's first name was?
I don't. I've talked with him several times, but I don't know his first name.
We could just leave it Mr. Houston.
I think so. I think, we will. So, if you can just remove that blank too, Robyn, that would be great. And I think that that was the only thing I found. Did anyone else find anything else?
Because the, as I point out here, the Kingston applicant, the owner, is, is Tom Johnson, so...
Correct.
So, that's important.
He was, he was acting as a representative of Mr. Johnson.
Yeah.
But Mr. Johnson was here, so I think we're okay.
Yes, he was.
Okay. Motion takes up the minutes of August 16th?
Absolutely.
Second? As amended?
Yes.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
And then pass it unanimously.
I don't have anything to say from it.
Oh, sorry, you want to abstain? Thank you. Thanks for reminding me. Under correspondence, we have a few items. Correspondence? This is correspondence, right? Yeah. That one we'd already done for us. We received an invoice from Arisa Federico, who prepared our minutes for the last several meetings. It took her 14.18 hours. Very thorough. I have no idea how much this will look like, but do we approve this as a...
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, don't care.
Give it a whirl. Well, the person's second is rep on this, I don't think you could hire a person that...
Give it a whirl.
It's a little, little bit too late.
Hey Lynn?
Yeah?
Point, did you say 0.18 hours?
No. I said 14.18. I know the acoustics in this room are horrible tonight.
There was a number, there was a number on the other side of the point.
Okay. So, Robin, if you give that to whoever needs to pay up, that would be great. We also received an invoice from Civil Construction Management for $300 for professional services having to do with the Village of Granite Fields engineering review. Received plans for the relocation of Unit 20. Reviewed draft report emailed to town, prepare for planning board meeting, continued then withdrawn for $300.
Hey, please. How, speaking of the hours, Dennis, we haven't seen him a while. Toran, is he all right? Dennis, how is he? We haven't seen him in quite a while.
Well, we haven't had things for him to be here to comment on.
Was he gonna, was he gonna give us some comment about that cactus evaluations and stuff that everyone was giving to us?
He did, he did. He and I talked. He verified that everything that she had told us in her letter was absolutely correct. Um, I got that information through Richard Wilson, because he was gonna do a site visit. Because there were other, there were some selectman issues as well. There were some, he talked to her in person.
Perfect, thank you.
Okay. We have correspondence from Dennis Quintel. Regarding the recent construction work on this site, and he's referring to alternative sales, my inspection report dated May 30th, 2022 noted that all site work has been done essentially according to the approved plan, and that it appeared the only work to be done was the final layer of asphalt, surface painting, and as-built plans. See revised bond worksheet. I have recently observed that the site work is completed. I am not aware of as-built plans were done, or if the town will require this to be done. Therefore, I have no objection to allowing the full bond amount to be released. And what's remaining, the bond was $311,975.93, and remaining is $36,999.07.
Got a question. The only need as-built plans is if there was a change between one for and original one. So, if, if it looked to me like that, my name is as scheduled.
That's what I was going to say, exactly. I've talked with Dennis about that, because that was part of the conditional approval. And that, the only reason I do the as-built plans is if there's significant changes to the site from what we approved. And that sometimes happens during construction, but in this particular site, it did not happen. So, having as-built plans that would restate what our approved site plan says is...
We don't have to, but we can just say we have as-built plans.
Yeah, yeah. I would recommend that we do acknowledge that in this instance, as-built, as-built plans aren't, aren't necessary.
Absolutely. We need to add a formal motion.
I think we do.
Okay, I'll look at the way we have the plan.
And I have to write two myself.
You do!
Second. Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
And I will sign that.
So, can we get the department with Dennis?
Back to the pot. Then. Correspondence? About you? And next on the agenda is zoning discussion. So, we only have four meetings left this year. Five meetings left this year. We are not meeting the first Tuesday in November, because it's election day. So, we have two meetings next month, and the second one is full of, I believe will be full of hearings.
Um, we have, we'll have two meetings.
We've got Clark's coming back.
Yeah.
And we have...
Three to Boston, Robert.
Three to Boston?
The church.
The church is coming back, okay.
And we had an application for the campers and partner, but they didn't get fees sent to us in time. We have, we still haven't received the stormwater management plan, so they have to sort of regroup.
So, they'll be back in November.
And get their application to us.
Okay, so we have two hearings that night, so there won't be much time to discuss zoning. So, I talked to Glenn and went through, as you know, during the year, I keep a list of things that we discussed that we may want to do for zone, zoning changes. If anybody else has anything, it's great to bring it forward. Uh, but I asked Glenn, Glenn and I sort of quickly went through my list, which was very short. And I asked him to please not only put, pull together the information on that, but also to give us some wording, so that we have something to really discuss and move forward on, because we have really the first meeting in October, and not again until either the very end of the meeting in November, or the first meeting in December, before we go to make decisions. So, we're sort of on a rush timetable. So, I wanted to see how much we could get done tonight to move forward.
Glenn advised me, she's not gonna be here for the second meeting in October, so I was planning on covering that, but that'll be, you know.
Yep. Gonna miss that.
Thank you, Robin.
So...
Okay, so, um, if you, what I had before you really, there's only one thing here that Glenn and I talked about.
Yeah.
Um, and that's, that's the first one, and that's Lynn went over, was looking over all of the residentially zoned districts and found that they weren't consistent in the way that they talked about permitted uses. And they're not. Some of them have permitted uses called out. They all have permitted uses discussed within the zoning ordinance, but they're not all called out. And as I looked over it close, more closely, really what we need to do, all we have to do is editorial. All we have to do is numerically list everything in a consistent manner. And so, that, that isn't gonna change much, but there will be some number changes. So, I'll present those to you. And then actually rename two paragraphs in two of the ordinances that don't call themselves the permitted uses. So, if you look through our ordinances, you'll, three of the five say, 102.4, and it says permitted uses. In two of them, it just has a paragraph that lists what the permitted uses are. So, what I suggest we do is call that out, give it a designation, give it, give the paragraph that it's in a title. Uh, but those are all editorial, because there's no need for us to change any of the language that exists now.
It's just reformatting.
It is just reformatting. So, it doesn't, we should do it, because we're gonna be talking about it. When we accept that reformatting sometime this fall, it doesn't have to go to town anymore, because we won't be changing any text in any of the ordinances. We'll just be making it easier for somebody to go from one residential district to the next and see that there's sort of a consistency on how we talk about what are the permitted uses in that zone. So, it's a good thing to do, but it isn't gonna require the townspeople vote. So, that's a benefit.
My only thought was, if you, if you read a historic district that got capitalized, you know, in bold, underlined, permitted uses...
Yes, and it's like that in three of them.
Yeah, in three of them, and then the other two, it's not. So, if somebody wants to do something, build a duplex or something, and they wanna know, where can I do this? It's harder for them to find it in some areas, so we're just consistent. So, if they wanted to have a dog kennel, you know, they know which areas they can have a dog kennel. If they wanna do this, they wanna do that, just to make it easier to know, okay, I wanna move to that section of town, or can't do it in that section of town.
Yeah, it's a good, it's a good idea to do. And it is really short money for what we're going to accomplish, because it's not gonna, we're not gonna have to go to the voters. But beyond that, um, I've had discussions with Rich Wilson a couple of times now, early, um, early fall, about things that, um, as an offshoot of court cases that the board of selectmen have dealt with over the past year, has highlighted some problems in the zoning ordinance. And so, he asked me, in the, within the next couple of weeks, to put together some wording. So, I've, I've hit on a couple of them with this draft that, that I'd like people to take a look at just to understand what the issues could be that we would be talking about. One, one is really important, because the town got, um, pushback on the, the way residential use is described in Historic District 1. And it's described really ambiguously. All it says is residences. It doesn't, it doesn't go any further than that. And so, there, so when we have, when we had a proposal come in that was indeed residences, but in a structure and a density much higher than we anticipated, um, the town actually initially said, no, you don't, you don't meet our definition for that zoning district. But when their attorney pushed back and our attorney reviewed it, our attorney agreed with their attorney. Um, and so, the long and short of this is, work should be done on the historic district reference to residences if what in fact we want to be in that district are single-family residences. Now, this comes at a time when we are looking at a huge development in Historic District 1, which won't be single-family residences. They will, they will be multifamily units. Um, so, there's discussion that we have to have about that, and how that would impact any changes we might make. Because we've told that development team that they don't need a zoning change for their proposed use.
Or variants.
Or variants. And so, we're going to change this now, make it more restrictive. They presently have nothing formulated before any board, so it would apply to that. So, we, we need to be cognizant of that, because I, I think the intent, I think that the town's intent, and I say this because we would find out by doing the vote on a zoning change, is that the town isn't really crazy about having a lot of multifamily units in Historic District 1. But until we, until we do something about that definition, it could happen at any time.
We have a handful now, right?
There are a handful, yes.
Because there are a number of four, five, six unit places in the historic district that nobody ever really knows are there, they're not facing any issues, there's no problems.
Yeah, I see that's quite a deal.
So, that's the...
There's a lot of people next to Rex, to those people who...
Yeah, they have, we have to name them all up, there's quite a few.
Yeah.
There's quite a few in the historic district. It's been a place where you could have...
That's the discussion we need to have as a board.
Yeah.
Now, it's kind of, it's kind of a sticky situation. You just arbitrarily make that decision when, as you would know, it's been, it's been going on for a while. Doesn't mean it's right.
The unit that I owned was there since 1915.
And there's, but there's multiple units. But, but anything that's there, probably would be allowed to stay.
Right.
And residence is intentional meaning as opposed to...
It was done so long ago.
Commercial use, like...
Who knows?
Could be, 1970, like that.
But I also think, I was thinking more, yeah. I also think it's unfair at this point to make a change. Because at this point, you know, we've had someone purchase a property with the intent of doing that. The town has been supportive of that all along, and to suddenly change course...
Are you referring to that one particular project?
Would be very unfair, I think.
You almost feel awesome.
Yeah. And there's a lot of people in town that are welcoming that. They're seeing a, a new vibrancy coming to downtown that are think, they think that it's a great thing to happen.
And that's, that's another issue entirely, is the push for housing, not just affordable housing, housing in general in the state. And a lot of the pushes, Glenn, to relax zoning laws to allow, to move away from this kind of idea of very complex, you know, the two-way, the twenty-four punish situation, to, to allow for villages with mixed use, which we have in Area 111. And apartments is certainly part of that village concept. And I, I see that as moving away from improving the housing opportunity situation. Probably not easy, although well accepted by the state, among others, that all these residences. If we're trying to make the walking situation reclaim its normal, perhaps, as, you know, of the other district developments and obviously the seminary, seminary development, um, and I think it would be a...
So, we should, we should make it a point to invite Historic District Commission members to whatever public hearing we schedule for this discussion.
If, if we choose to have a discussion at all.
If we choose to do, to step away from the fact that it presently says residences.
I have a real hard time doing that, considering what's been brought forth at this point.
Yeah, we may just put, fill us out, maybe two lines, is to ask them what their feeling is about what they, what they would like to impose.
Well, I was about ready to ask Glenn if you had had any conversations with either... Well, I was about ready to ask Glenn if you had had any conversations with either the Chair or the Vice Chair at this point offline.
I have not.
Just, just, just.
The only ones I've talked about it with are the Board of Selectmen as a result of potential lawsuits.
Because this is coming from the Board of Selectmen.
Yes, yes.
Change. It's not something that we came forward with. I would think if we changed something that would affect the seminary project at this point, we could easily find ourselves back in court, in Land Court.
Oh, that, yeah, yeah.
At the, at the Board of Land Appeals.
So in advance, in advance of any hearing that might take place, should that's the path we decide to go, we should probably be inviting the HDC or who wants to be there for whatever meeting we're gonna be having a discussion about it. Because I'm assuming that we would discuss this.
Yeah, you're, you're just looking at this stuff.
This is the first time, so we would have at least a special meeting where we have a discussion about it. And then at that meeting, we'd probably decide whether or not to put it to public hearing.
I, I, I was kind of hoping we would look at these at the October, whatever meeting it is, sixth of.
The first Tuesday.
Yeah, yeah. So, so, so that was that one. I don't, I don't mean to belabor these, because you haven't had a chance to see them.
And then says a legal fifteen day notice?
I'm sorry?
And the third, and that first one of the amendments in the third line.
Oh, that's in notices and warrants, so that's, that's not a planning board meetings. That's actually noticing the town warrant for town meeting.
Okay.
It is confusing though, because it seems like this should be something that we're talking about from a zoning side. But this, that would actually go in the entire, for the entire zoning ordinance. But the, what I, what I forgot to mention, and now of course, because I still want to say his name, what's the new code enforcement officer's name?
Jess Nesbitt.
What is it?
Jess Nesbitt.
Jess, okay. He, he sat in on one of the meetings with Richard about these zoning changes. And I presume I'm gonna be working with him on some of these that they deal with much more frequently than the planning board does. So I'm so excited that he's here, and he really seems, he seems great. He seemed really bright. He, he, when, he came up and talked with me yesterday about a couple of ongoing things, and there was no moss on, on that stone, so that's, that's really, it's exciting.
That's encouraging.
It's, and it's exciting.
I mean, he has forty years building experience. He actually served as a police officer in town for four years.
But he wasn't a police officer.
He was a police officer here in Kingston.
Oh, in Kingston.
Kingston, yeah. Fantastic personality. He's somebody who can kind of talk, he can talk people into doing the right thing, and those that still don't wanna do the right thing, he's not afraid to stand up and put his foot down. When it needs to be just a fantastic personality for a state court.
Yeah. So I, I look forward to, to working with him. That's cool, the swimming pool fence, it appears that the national code that most towns rely on doesn't match with ours, and he's gonna look into that. If it, if it is different and we should change it, then that would be one that I hope that I can get you to work on.
Is that something, also there are going to be?
Yeah, because it's, it's actually was, it's in the ordinance section. And so it has to be adopted through town meeting votes, so we're the ones that get to hold those public hearings, so.
Yeah, I just realized that, uh, pool fence regulations were something that was planning. I was, we're putting it in a subdivision. I can see what happened.
Yeah, no, they apparently.
More than building code.
Yeah, well, but building codes take, are required to go through the, um, planning board mechanic process.
Yeah. Yeah, one of the, I mean, one of the comments in there that says, you know, must be able to keep out youngsters. Like that's in the definition, in the definition of the swimming pool fence.
Yeah.
So like, you know, impaired twenty-one-year-old youngster, or five-year-old.
That's funny. Are they, are they planning to make any changes as far as height or the other?
I would just adopt the.
Yeah, it appears that the, the federal guideline, I think it's only a guideline, is for four and a half feet, and we have a five-foot requirement.
Oh, okay.
And so it's.
Our youngsters are a little bit taller.
That, that may be, and that may be something that they decide not to, not to change. They might feel more comfortable as it is now, so I just wanted to make you folks aware. The bigger one is this next one. Our ordinance has, from what I can find, five different penalty sections. Mostly associated with individual ordinances. And so when we adopted those ordinances, they had penalty sections in them. But there isn't one overriding penalty section for the entire ordinance. And Town Council brought this to the Board of Selectmen's attention sometime last year. It just said it makes the enforcement much more difficult because it's clear that the penalty section exists in some places and not in others. So the guidance is do one page that has how you want, how the zoning ordinance gets amended, how conflicts in it are dealt with, how penalties are admitted, are administered, and how the administration of the ordinance works. And just adopt that as one page so it covers the entire ordinance.
So it would be adding Article Ten.
Yes, which.
In, in, sort of in its entirety.
Exactly, although we would have another number for it.
Whatever.
Yes. And it's, it is, it is a really important thing to do, and I know as I look through the penalty sections that do exist, they're woefully outdated because the, the penalties are the old RSA permitted fine, which is, which was a hundred dollars, but now it's two seventy-five a day, up to five fifty a day if you have any other penalties. So it, it's woefully outdated even if they were to use those. So in, in this instance, we don't call out the specific lines, we just call out in that penalty section, which is the third paragraph down, the RSA that gives those fees, and it's RSA six seventy-six seventeen, sections one through five. So on that first line, that's where the penalty, the state penalty exists. And that's how we would make sure that we stay in the five lines of that penalty. So I, I'd love you folks to look over this. It's something you really, this isn't the one we have to do. And you can add any language that you think would be helpful for the town in particular. But we have to do something, we have to do something at town meeting to remove this issue from the zoning ordinance.
So that's definitely on your agenda.
That's definitely has to be one that we accomplish.
And where we do have penalties, there's a higher difference between options for penalties. We can't do this one, we saw the other ones. And the penalty is two seventy-five, you still have expression of a thirty-eight period. They presumably have to match this, or.
When we pass this, it will mean that there's a conflict in the ordinance if I don't find them all. What my presumption will be, will be in association with adopting this, there would be four lines or five lines of deletions. And we would delete the present penalty sections that exist now that have wrong fees. But even if I miss one, if, as the, as the conflict section says, if in fact there are two that conflict, the more stringent one applies. And so the newer, higher penalty would be the one that would take effect as long as we get this in place. But I was able to find, when I did my review, I was able to find five of them, I think, that I feel need to be deleted, and I'll make those part of this amendment.
So if we do this, when we do this, the, those articles that have penalties attached to them would refer to that, and wouldn't have any?
Right, we would, we would delete the section from that ordinance. And since this would apply to all the ordinances, this is what would apply. And they will all be one amendment, so that they can't sign this in and then refuse to delete any other. That it will all, it will be a one, a one-shot deal. Will be both at doing an amendment and doing a series of deletions, all with one vote.
So you'll prepare the, the whole, as though we're a law article?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, I think the biggest thing that maybe Richard been referring to is the fact that even with the penalties in here, and people ignore them, the new board has an ability to collect, collection costs, you know, turn fees and things like that. I think that's, that's been a big particular, you know, the second aren't gonna go out with seven-five dollars penalties at a cost of seven-five thousand dollars, and attorneys.
So, so yeah, there's, there's no way we're gonna, we just have to get this done, so we will, we will get it done.
Okay.
There was some discussion, now, Richard has, has approached this topic with me twice, and it's the lighting ordinance. And he has told me a couple of times that the way the ordinance reads now is unenforceable. And when I left our last meeting, it was my presumption that he was telling me it was unenforceable because we rely on lumens, which are obsolete, but they're not obsolete.
Yeah, I think it's confusing with the sound ordinance, because he's.
They absolutely still, lumens still apply to LED lighting. In, in every bit as strong a manner as they did in old, for old incandescent lights. So I will talk with him again and make sure I'm not missing something in our conversation about that ordinance. Because he really, he seems to think it needs significant changes, and I wasn't able to see those.
And I believe it was, from what he said when he was here, was that he was hearing that from other folks that he was talking to. And I don't think this came from him necessarily, but I think when other folks he was talking to reviewed our ordinance, he was carrying that message back saying, you know, I've been told that this is unenforceable.
As, as, and the other people would be the electrical inspectors, I'm assuming?
Well, and there's another, you can't have.
I don't think it was necessarily in-town folks, but.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I don't know for sure. Yeah, 'cause one of the issues was you can't have an electrical inspector inspecting work that he's installed for his business, so you need a second electrical inspector for any.
That's why we have two.
That's why we do have two, yeah, but unfortunately I think that came up in one of the projects. And he was talking about not being able to, to measure until you got the equipment to be able to measure at the boundary line. That's not, you know, lumens are, are a result.
Right, and of course, all the lumen information would be displayed with fixtures.
Hard on the specification for the fixture, the box and the instructions.
It's listed as.
I think the problem is, is that any manufacturer can make something that meets the technical definition but gets past the intention of why it was defined that way. They can create it in a way that technically meets the limitations, but gets their desired effect to bypass it.
Yeah, I just, I just couldn't see how that, that would work. I mean, we discussed about, you know, having nice, tight, compliant fixtures that can be mounted horizontally and.
Take away the.
Or, or, if violations are mounted. But, yeah, I, I didn't see, I never read that, and I couldn't see what he was talking about.
So I will, I will have a further conversation with Richard.
Let's get some specifics if we can, and then we'll know where we're going.
Yeah, 'cause the last time Glenn said it was all because we didn't have penalties. And when he brought that up, and then I was in here, and this penalty's right, right there.
It's, it's one of the ones that has, it's one of the.
Well, it was that, so.
Yep. So I'll, I'll, I'll work on that. You'll see here I have feather flags, question mark. That's a one that code enforcement is just having a difference of a time with because they're everywhere. And I got the distinct feeling that there was some interest in the board discussing whether the prohibition on feather flags is still desired.
I think some of the comments from the Board of Selectmen were, you know, they, they think it's too restrictive. Some people thought it was just nonsense completely, but I think they were interested in maybe it being taken up to be looked at, maybe a limitation on the number. They could be there to allow, to allow them in some way, shape, or form, with a little more flexibility. Because, yeah, it seems to be like an enforcement, big enforcement issue.
It's a huge, apparently it's a huge enforcement issue. And so I, I told Richard that I would bring the issue to the board for you guys to think about and for us to discuss as some sort of plan for moving forward.
Right, thanks. I thought that was one of the reasons why they had a, I don't think, provision going. But you get some time from all these extra signs you allow. We did have, you know, one of the, the last time, several years ago, we did enforcement, and we got compliance. It's kind of tough for those people to be told they can't have flags, and you just kind of maybe stick them up all over the place. So we do need to get, to get some understanding. The problem with, with needing signs of certain type, feather flags, is how big, you know. What defines, you know, has to be shaped like a hobbie sail, or is it, you know, has to have winter sign? You get the, that, that, and you get banners, and so, oh, this is a feather flag. It's a, it's a, it's a, for due by seventy-eight, it's a standard flag.
Doesn't it mean our definition of a freestanding sign?
They have to blow up when they go.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, we don't have a definition of a feather flag under the sign.
No, it would fall under freestanding sign, wouldn't it? Unattached to any building, sandwich boards, and similar installations shall be considered a freestanding sign for purposes of this regulation. Also, a sign supported by one or more uprights or graces permanently affixed to the ground is a freestanding sign. And then it defines the height and size and setback for each zone.
And that is probably, that is probably the fall into the temporary sign category, which I believe we say are not allowed.
Well, thirty-day limit, or thirty, not temporary signs, and they have to be taken down when the event, the advertising is over.
But if we step back and think, I think the reason that people didn't like feather signs was because they got in the way sometimes of your visibility, of turning, going down the road, being at a, at a, at an intersection and not being able to see past them. I think, was that?
I think that was part of it, but, but those could be double. But, but I think it was, it was an expanded discussion that was that, plus just the proliferation of stuff along the roadside.
Yeah, I think there are some businesses that like to put up like twenty to forty feather, feather banners, and then there are some that may just want two. But there, you know, there are certain types of businesses that seem to want to use a lot more of them than others.
I mean, what it does, it don't, it's, even though drive-in isn't particularly, you know.
Less destructive or anything else.
Right.
But, but you, you really need to be consistent. And, you know, if you're gonna say feather flags, you're gonna add feather flags in, you're gonna have to define it.
Yep.
And regulate the size and the number, so we take it. I don't know if you care.
No, we don't, Ashley, just keep going.
Okay.
I'm just practicing.
I'm just reiterating what we've already said. I, I, I would be hesitant just to blanket, you know, ignore feather flags from the ordinance. No, and I, and I don't think, I, I think the consensus of board members that were there, I don't think they wanted a complete, you know, lifting of the prohibition on feather banners, but maybe look at some more options that offer some more flexibility for it.
Yeah, I mean, we could look at the sign ordinance and see if it's too restrictive, and then say, you know, I, I think defining a specific type of flag might be, I don't know, just.
I, I have to tell you, I, there's like three or four definitions that it could fit under. And so at, at minimum, you should probably figure out where feather flags go in the several options here.
Yeah, I mean, the freestanding signs, there's freestanding sign, and you should.
But is it a portable sign? Is it a temporary sign? Is it a freestanding sign?
Well, the temporary has a definition of what the temporary is, and what it has to expect.
If you look under provisions under temporary signs, no sign shall be animated, moving, flashing, or intensely lighted. There should be no visible moving parts, which feather flags have. Blinking, scrolling, flashing, or repeating messages, images, or displays. Should be no glaring illumination. No part may consist of banners, pennants, penn, pennants, ribbons, streamers, spinners, or other similar devices. No sign shall emit audible sound, noise, or visible matter. And then it goes on to computer-generated type, electronic reader boards, animated signs, and that sort of thing. But that's the only place where there's sort of a definition of something that might define a feather flag.
I think several of these do F and W L.
The F?
F is the freestanding. Uh, N, a sign on a sign intended to be permanently affixed to the ground, those are not intended. Temporary sign, they could say it's only out there for thirty days.
But I think that would be self, self-evident. If you go down, down the road on August first, and there's a sign there, and you go down there on October first, you know.
I'm just saying, I don't, I don't think that we've done a good job figuring out where feather flags go in this lengthy list.
I would, I would probably agree with Peter that if you're gonna allow them or add them through our ordinance, it has to be defined on what it is.
Mm-hmm.
And somebody else would say, oh, this is a feather flag. You know, anything they put up there. Anything is a feather flag.
You could put a picture in the ordinance.
They, they go something, something, it's gonna be defined. And I'm, I have nothing to take away from any business trying to make extra money by advertising, so. But I, I think you have to have some kind of guideline on what a feather flag is, when it's a definition.
And even, even where they're restricted, like you probably don't want them in single-family residential.
Correct.
Something like that.
Correct.
I did have one other ordinance I was curious, the board was interested in taking it up. I had some folks approach me asking, you might be able to give me some history on this one, just with your experience in other communities. Some folks are asking about just the general twenty-foot setback on like structures kind of everywhere. Uh, cause they brought that like, well, you know, you can build a fence pretty much right on the property line, and you can park a trailer right on the property line, and you can park a car right on the property line. Yet, if you have a small backyard and you wanna shed, you have to like put it in the middle of your backyard to meet like the twenty-foot setback from all the stuff, and it takes up all your usable space. Um, is that pretty common that you see in all towns? Cause I think, you know, they were, if the board wasn't willing to take it up, I think we may end up seeing a citizen's petition to like change the general setback for non-occupied structures similar to sheds. It'd be like, to only be something like five feet.
It's a, it's a crapshoot there, and I see a lot of towns do just what Kingston does. They have a building setback, and sheds have to make a building setback. A number of towns, let's see, so I work with four towns closely. Half of them have a, a statement that if your structure is under a hundred and fifty feet, fifty square feet, then it doesn't, then it doesn't have to comply with setbacks. So, it's, it's, it is a crapshoot on, on how towns deal with it.
And I think these people approached because they, they, you know, they kind of said, well, listen, we'd like the board to maybe look at it so that it's crafted properly without unintended consequences. Uh, cause I know there were some ordinances that went to, in the past, you know, citizens petition that had larger-reaching effects than people had.
Yes.
Well, some people, well, I didn't intend, some may have. Uh, but, no, no names.
That has happened fairly recently.
But, you know, maybe, maybe we could look at something like, maybe the board could, instead of just changing a blanket setback, maybe we could look at some ordinance that other towns have where if you have a small, you know, shed under a hundred and fifty square feet. So, I mean, and that's still pretty decent size shed, you know, fifteen, you know, fifteen by ten.
That's not, you know, most of his pre- found.
Yeah.
Those are twelve by twelve. They can be long, they're, they're fairly small.
So, if the, if the board's willing to entertain it, I have no problem coming up some language along the lines of something like that, where, yeah, it's not where you're pouring a hard concrete foundation and then you're gonna set it on it. But it, it's, you know, something that's, it's semi-permanent, but if ever needed to be, it's probably something that would be moved around.
You do see people take the sheds with them when they move.
Yeah, and it would be, you know, and obviously it would be non-occupied structures.
Right, by humans. People, chickens.
Yeah, well, not occupied in the sense of like residential.
Right.
Like as, I, I don't need an occupancy permit for chickens.
Need an assender.
Um, one thing that came to me was, um, I had a visit last week, last Friday, I think it was, or Thursday, with Mr. Dornan, who popped into my office. And, um, his, he wanted us to take a look at site plan review and when it's not required.
We did have that discussion.
We had that discussion when he was here.
Yeah.
So, I did take a look at site plan review, which is on page nine oh four dash two, um, and number D. And it said it's not required for the expansion of any existing non-residential use under the following circumstances. One, a new site plan review need not be submitted to the planning board approval if the proposed development of the site meets each of the following. One, an, uh, A, there is an approved site plan for the property on file of the planning board office. The expansion does not constitute a change of use. The proposal does not result in expansion greater than seven percent of the original structure's size. In no instance shall the increase constitute greater than fifteen hundred square feet of new construction. All other requirements of the site plan are satisfied. All site activity must presently conform to the existing approved site plan, and twelve copies of a revised site plan showing all alterations shall be submitted for the purposes of a file update. And the exemption can be used twice.
And we've had, and we've had a number of those.
Yeah, but we've not.
And I went through this, and I, I didn't have any issue with this at all. I thought it was very clear.
And was he suggesting that, that, there's an issue with that?
He was, he was suggesting there was an issue with this, yes. I went through, I didn't see an issue. The only thing that I saw that we might wanna talk about is where it said expansion greater than seven percent of the original structure's size. So, if you have a thousand-foot structure, you can't put a seven-by-ten shed without going to full site plan review. And obviously, no bigger than fifteen hundred square feet, which means the building size would be twenty-two thousand five hundred square feet. I get that. I mean, I get that. But, you know, for just a little shed or something you wanted to put on the property, the seven percent seems small to me.
Well, this, this, remember, doesn't apply to residential, it's only commercial.
Right, but even in commercial, you might just wanna put a, a seven-by-ten foot storage shed. And you couldn't do it if you had a thousand-square-foot building.
Keep in mind, if that's an expansion, a shed would be an expansion because, uh, you're talking about some of the original structure size, well, uh, you'd have to be attached.
No, we, we, we haven't, we've had this question before. We haven't interpreted it to include that it isn't attached.
It was fine.
But the language does sort of presume it's attached.
It, it does, and I think the idea is that if you can put a second building or third, whatever, uh, you know, you do like alternatives and come in and.
Because an instance where we, we looked at that and we allowed it not to be attached was the expansion at the campground down on one-twenty-five. In the last two years, maybe, or six years, because time melts away in my mind. But it's, it's been.
Probably more than two.
A little while since we did it.
For me.
But in that one, we talked about that, and we allowed it to be not attached. But it was predicated on the building that was there, um, because he wanted to do some propane tanks or something.
Yeah.
Yes.
And so, it was kind of, it wasn't gonna be attached to the structure, but it was gonna be, uh, inclined in enclosed area. And so, we allowed it to not be attached, but it did have to meet that size requirement.
So, my question is, this is a regulation. So, if somebody came in and they said, I'm gonna put a ten-by-fifteen foot shed on my property, or I wanna put, I, I, uh, an addition on my property just with storage that's, you know, ten by fifteen, is this something that they could ask for a waiver?
Yes.
And therefore, it becomes less important?
Yeah.
This is, this is site, this is site plan review, so we, when we were talking about it earlier, I didn't wanna tell you, no, don't do that, I wanna talk about zoning. But because site plan review, we can do any time during the year.
Yeah.
We can make those changes anytime we want.
And even if we, and if, I mean, we don't change it.
We can absolutely.
A waiver could be required.
Right, so therefore, I'm not sure that anything needs to be changed on it, so.
Right.
But Mr. Dornan had, had asked, so I, I wanted to bring it forward and just say, you know, we're having a discussion on zoning regulations, and just wanted, so I, I brought it forward, there you go.
And I think for most businesses, you know, most businesses aren't a thousand square feet.
Right.
So, for a business that has a site, one that has a site name, because that's part of the scientific appearance that the, uh, site name exists. Uh, you really wanna know if someone's gonna put something more than seven percent of the original structure size on there. You want, I'm very much just put.
Oh, I guess.
Proper, say, we're adding, you know, we're adding a, you know, a milling facility, um, that's gonna be, you know, thousand square feet, and that's okay, cause it's, you know, it's only eight percent of our original building size. We would expect them to ask.
Sure.
If we decide, well, it's pretty close, you know, we can waive it, but, um, but as long as all these other things, you know, the site thing's already there. But as Glen pointed out once before, is that this is our opportunity to get site plans on file, this is some kind of thing.
Oh, yeah.
On file, um, so that if they come through a, a site plan review, and there's no site plan review, then we can't really use that waiver.
You put two sixty-six foot one-twenty-five on your list?
Yes, but I think Glenn has something else he'd like to talk about on the zoning.
Okay.
Oh, that's not zoning?
No.
Oh, okay. I have something that I want the board to consider for a possible zoning change. And, uh, I'm thinking that I might not get support for this, but I wanted to at least bring it forth and let the board discuss it. Uh, so I did make, um, I used our existing ordinance, and this is the home occupation ordinance, that I feel, my own personal feeling is that it, it could be tightened up a bit. Uh, and so, I've added a couple of sections, so if you wanna take on Steve, that's, so using the existing ordinance, I just added some wording to it. Folks might not feel it's necessary, but.
So, what you underlined are the changes you'd like to make?
The, 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 the changes are on the second, on the back side. Basically, two things, making it a conditional use permit as opposed to just a self-certifying, uh, ordinance, and then an enforcement section that will give more teeth to it and rely on the select order, the code enforcement person. A little bit more than, because right now, all they do is, you know, if something's brought to their attention, they go and they talk to the person, and the person will say, oh, yeah, yeah, that's fine, I understand. There really isn't a lot they can do.
And I think involved by businesses that have, interesting, like residential businesses, or have signs out front, or?
You know, it's, 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 it's one thing, and, and I fully support it, you know, on occupations. And I think that, you know, if somebody's, you know, got a home office, and they've got a computer, and they're just doing work in there, they're not gonna be seen as, you wouldn't even know it was gonna be there. I think it's more when there's a substantial business that, that, that comes in as part of the residential property. And if they're not following the, uh, the restrictions that are in here, then it becomes an issue. And without, without an enforcement section, it's, it's hard for the select order, the code enforcement. And I also think that without it having some kind of review at a board level, at a land use board level, I think folks might view it as perhaps not critical, not important, uh. It's just my, just my take.
The only, my only concern is that a conditional use permit is, is the question of, uh, fee structure. Um, I have a, for site plan review and things like that, we have a, it's a pretty chunk, big chunk of change. You know, if you just wanna go into businesses, uh, you know, part-time CPA, your cap season, um, or whatever, uh, yeah, I can see that.
Well, the other thing is, when I, I, I did take a look at a few towns just to see how they handle it. And some towns actually split it in two. Uh, they, they have like a minor home occupation that doesn't require any permitting. And it's one that is just, as you described, it's someone doing some bookkeeping at home, or, you know, they've got a computer, and they're doing email, and that's it.
Yeah.
And then there's a more substantial one where you're actually using a portion of the, um, the property for some kind of a substantial business activity, you know, construction or whatever.
I know, there's a couple of businesses that I'm very well aware of, um, you know, on very tiny lots that have excavators and, um, dump trucks and all of that, you know, a lot that's a point four. And the neighbors aren't happy at all.
And, and I guess the thing that I'm cautious about with that is that, so, say you have a landscaping company that has equipment and stuff like that. Well, they don't actually do any of their landscaping on their yard, so, so look at somebody like me. Because I don't run a business, I have all sorts of stuff.
True.
Sure.
And so, there's no prohibitions on that. Now, you're gonna tell somebody that tries to make their living just cause it happens to be their house, and they have to park their trucks, trailers, and equipment and stuff like that there, that they're not allowed to. Cause I think they could be saying, well, listen, I'm not doing my construction business here, but I'm more than entitled to park my dump truck and excavator and stuff like there. You should, I don't think we should be able to prevent them from doing that.
And I'm not saying we should, I just said that I know that there's been complaints about that.
Uh, does a dump truck weigh more than twelve thousand pounds?
G B W.
I don't know. It's a big one.
I was thinking.
Yeah, most of the people.
That it's prohibited anyway, so, I, I mean, that exists currently.
Uh, there are, there are some personally-used pickup trucks that the actual G B W, is more than twelve thousand pounds.
And my neighborhood has excavators, you know, and small, you know.
It just says the location shall not involve the use for delivery of materials to and from the premises or the onsite overnight. Okay.
What zones, what zones don't have it though?
It doesn't specify.
Because in more residential, you're allowed to have it in your business.
Right.
With site, no, no, that, that, with your, with site plan review, yeah, but that's what I'm curious.
But you could park your mail truck.
But can you park your school bus? Can you take your school bus home to pick up kids the next morning?
I don't know that that counts as a home occupation, does it?
No, I don't think so, but I'm just saying.
Yeah, that would be, but it does cost.
Boy, that, that, that just, uh, field there with that.
Well, that, well, that's what I'm saying, so, you know, you can have your dump truck and your excavator, cause, well, I'm not doing my, I'm not, I'm not like mining earth out of my own yard for my construction business. It just happens to be where I live, I'm just parking my stuff here.
Yeah, but it says where the answer is.
But that's for, they're saying for an in-home business. I, my argument would be, if I just park my stuff here, unless I have signage promoting my business, a home business.
So, so a lot of this discussion is, is happening around the ordinance as it exists.
Yeah.
I, 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 and if you wanna go there, that's fine, but that's, that's not what I'm suggesting. I'm suggesting the ordinance is fine the way it is, but I, I am proposing that it might have some more teeth. And if, and if the board's uncomfortable with the whole permitting process, um, uh, at the very least, I would hope that there would be some enforcement teeth, some penalty, uh, for my clients.
Yeah.
You know, I do think if somebody's gonna have a home business that's going to be disruptive on the neighbors, that you should have to have a conditional use permit, and that you should have to notice the neighbors. So, the neighbors can come and say, you know, I, could you please put a barrier up? Could you please do a little bit more, um, you know, plant a few more trees or shrubs or something to help with the noise?
So, I just, I just did this like yesterday, and I, I mentioned to Glenn that I, I didn't even tell him what it was. I called the office.
You didn't, you were very secretive.
And I asked if he, I, I was gonna propose it, except he wanted ahead of time. And of course, he was very, very cagey. And I got the message, of course, and it was at the end of his day on Monday. And he said, well, at this stage of the game, Glenn, just bring it in to the board.
That's exactly right.
The message was, it's the end of my day, I'm done, leave me alone.
And you're, and you're putting.
I'll be leaving soon.
Yes.
And you're putting a fine in of a hundred dollars, which of course, we wanted to, to match the rest of our ordinance.
And I, and I only, that was language I stole from someplace else. I didn't come up with that myself, or the, or the amount, so whatever, whatever would be appropriate.
Yeah, the deal would be two, more than two and a half times that, but.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, I mean, if.
So, so I guess all, all we're doing tonight is, is, I, I mean, do we want it on the agenda for when we discuss all this other stuff?
Oh, I think so. Yeah, we should talk about this on October sixth.
Yeah.
Give us time to go through everything. Is there anything else that you think we need to do a zoning change on? Fortunately, it looks like we're not going to have many, which is great.
Well, I'm, I am not done with my discussions with, with Rich and. Well, I'm, I am not done with my discussions with, with Rich and Jess, so.
Okay. Now let's go.
Can I just ask? So in looking at like the historic history, for example, there's some language in there that's a little bit antiquated and like there was another reference to some.
Yeah.
I mean, is there an opportunity and something to go through and maybe.
Anything.
Something along the language, but that would still all have to go.
Has to go to town.
Yes.
Yeah.
Unless it's an editorial or a legislative change against.
A few years ago, we went through everything, but that was a long time ago.
Well, it, folks love reading through the twelve pages of something on it.
They love it, it makes their voting experience so satisfying.
Well, they were so happy at the primary, they didn't mind it was one sheet.
And one, one of them was a short sheet.
So we can't count that as a change.
There's no easy one, Rob, there's no easy one.
Like.
I, I think, uh, even if you put in a, definitely there are defences in the, definitions actually, we still gather, we definitely go, whatever's the change.
But I do think that if anything like that is certainly at this day and age discriminatory. So we have to be really careful.
Your, some languages, like, it's, it's clear from nineteen seventy-two. Yeah, it's from nineteen seventy-two. Before you were born, as you, as you pointed out earlier.
It's the four, uh.
All right, so.
Is there anything else, uh, in, under zoning that we want to talk about tonight?
No, just that our, it's October fourth that we'll be discussing.
October fourth.
That's our, that's our October.
I kept sending you different dates.
And I want to.
Like three different dates.
I want to thank you, Len, for bringing this in and bringing in suggested language. So if we do come in with anything else, if you could bring suggested language, that would be great because that'd speed things up a little bit.
It's usually, it's much easier for a group to. Work with something that's already in front of them rather than having to try to create it.
Right.
As a committee.
Two sixty-six foot, one twenty-five?
Two sixty-six foot, one twenty-five. I have all of a sudden been getting a lot of folks wanting to talk about that project.
Folks within the project?
Yes, peripherally involved and the butters. Because, man, D O T. Their suggestion. Is to. Depress one twenty-five by like eight or twelve feet.
At the intersection?
Along the frontage of the development.
Why?
And nobody likes that.
Why?
Why? Also that it would be more at grade?
I. I haven't been in on the discussions with, with, um, D O T, but people are really unhappy. And so they're, they're trying to. They, they have talked to me about the potential of changing the location of the entry lane. Because if, if they do that, they can minimize, um, the development team. And I said, well, and they were like, the board may have carried that, right? And, and my response was, you can't do anything that major without reopening the process. And we don't have to open, reopen the entire site process, but we would have to hold a hearing about the entry lane. And because it's going to be, what they're saying would be substantial. So I, I, I don't know what to compound all of this. There was another fatality on one twenty-five in Brentwood. And I believe, although it's hearsay, but I, I trust who's saying it. I think there's going to be a citizens' push in Brentwood for D O T to reduce the speed limit. And coincidentally, if the speed limit gets reduced, the design parameters for the depressing the highway get affected.
Does it also affect the intersection upgrade at Marshall Road potentially?
Um, I, I bet. I, I think reduced speed would, would impact the length of the, um, entry lanes.
Okay.
And any potential turn lanes. I don't think it would have a, a huge impact on the geometry, other than reduced speeds would allow them to truncate some things that they would have to make larger with higher speeds. So I'm getting a lot like, I'm, yesterday I got four phone calls in the office about whether or not the speed limit was going to be reduced on the board.
No wonder you weren't happy to hear from me.
It was a zoo yesterday.
There was an active petition to signalize the intersection, South quarter, one twenty-five in Brentwood.
Did you?
Where Mitchell Land is possible currently.
Um, that's been.
And, and there's, there's.
Well, that's been proposed before.
Correct.
Uh, and D O T was firm that the warrants weren't met, so they weren't going to do it. Um, now, I don't know if, because I know of two fatalities now there, I don't know what the warrants are or how long the time period is, but it, it is not a good situation. And the speeds are high. So I just wanted you folks to know that we may be seeing an amended site plan package. If there, if, if D O T holds firm on depressing the highway, they're going to ask to change the. The location of the highway because that will prevent them from having to depress it as much, so we could be seeing something.
So who depresses the highways? And does that have to be done by the applicant or does it have to be done by?
It has to be paid for by the applicant, but D O T would do it.
Okay.
But the applicant would pay for it.
And, and I want to know.
And the problem is it impacts the butters and if they don't buy into it, the whole project will crash.
You said ten to twelve vertical feet?
Yes.
Yeah.
What is the thing?
Well, you can get it in a Magnussen.
Yeah, I was going to say like Brentwood or like Magnussen.
That's that near in that corner, then you get that bridge, the river.
Yeah, it'd be like.
So it's so.
Well, it's supposed to be driveways, the guy that sells the dirt in the sun, the Magnussen, it's all the driveways. Or bridges?
It's, it's.
I mean, it would essentially, it would essentially.
Bridge.
All the way around the corner, the Magnussen.
And that's why, I mean, it's not his project, why does he have to be impacted at all? It's, it's not his project. So.
It's interesting because all the other hot, all the other driveways off there are pretty much at level, it's only Magnussen that goes down. And this.
So we're, we're going to hear something, we're going to hear something.
And how are the butters hearing this? Are they being noticed?
I don't know how they are. I'm, I'm guessing, let's see, Connie Magnuson's son Bob lives in Brentwood.
Oh, that's true.
He's probably, whatever, whatever sort of thing is percolating in Brentwood probably gets.
All the children in the drum, I haven't had any twelve feet.
I, I, it was surprising to me when I first heard it, but remember, they've been fighting about this with D O T for eighteen months now.
So.
I don't, why would that have been proposed previously? Because it was a distribution center, it is currently.
They got, they got preliminary approvals from D O T through the process, but never a final. Because our, our approval was conditioned on D O T's permit and that has been in contention this entire time.
And, and is that the real significant outstanding condition of our approval?
Well, the other state permits, uh, they tie themselves to D O T now. Like, um, Alteration of Terrain.
Yeah.
Won't keep their final if there's a D O T permit involved, because they know that there could be an impact there.
And that's the D S.
And that's the yes.
So what I have found very interesting is I've traveled a lot in the last four to six weeks from Kingston to Rochester. Watch.
One kind of one forty-five.
That's a long time.
And what I have discovered is that nobody's going the speed limit.
Nope.
Is that going faster?
They're all going slower.
Yeah.
It's true.
And I.
They're going slow.
They are going slower.
What time of day are you driving?
Yeah, yeah, I can tell you, I, I go, I go to Farmington every single Friday morning to see my mother. And let me tell you, if I'm going the speed limit, I have an angry stream of people.
Yeah.
And I have a pickup truck almost in my backseat.
Another time I do this.
It's always a surprise.
Market basket to the urban gas station because they're trapped in traffic lights.
Yeah, that's true, they are trapped.
It's terrible.
It, I have found, you know, all of my depth, all the way through, every, and then into Lee, very, very slow, very slow.
Oh my God, that's, I wish that was my experience, that's not my experience.
Not mine.
It's funny that with middle of the day, um, and, and morning drive time.
Nine, ten, eleven, three.
Seems to me every time I need to be something.
Like going to a planning board.
Yeah. Somebody, very poor focus, is going.
Because that's what drives it.
Great lights on.
The blinker that's on.
But I have amazed, I'll be traveling along in Brentwood, I'll be going along in Brentwood, going up between, um, Middle Road and North Road. And I, I think I'm going really fast and I'm looking down at the speed limit, I'm going forty. And everybody's going forty or forty-five at the most.
I, I am flying at every opportunity I get, I'm a hazard.
Me too.
I'm a hazard.
So Len, what is it?
You don't need this for looking.
I know.
I was going to say, yeah, wherever you're driving.
I, I, I'm, I don't know, I can find out, I can find out, but I don't know.
What that would do.
It's, it's, it's engineering, so it's magic to me. Well, I'm a planner, I'm not an engineer, and what they do is magic.
If you come up with any information, I'm sure we'd love to hear it.
But the only thing that I've heard.
I'll keep you apprised.
The, um, the Commercial Railtors had a meeting with, uh, Commissioner Sheen.
Oh, yeah, you told me this.
And it was fascinating, I don't know, did I tell everybody about it? It was, it was really interesting, she said the biggest problem they're having at D O T is engineers. And the problem was that during and after COVID, they had a whole group of engineers that were older.
Yep.
And they came retirement age and they all retired. And they've had a, they've done a good job recruiting new young engineers. But the problem is, they don't have that middle level to supervise and all these young engineers need a lot of supervision. So they were seeing a lot of crazy ideas and changing and it's taking a lot longer to get things done because of the supervision that's, that's needed. And then, and the lack of people to do the supervision. So, I mean, that's what she basically said, it was a very interesting meeting as she was explaining that. And I actually brought up this and why this hadn't been, I didn't bring it up so much, you know, I mean, I didn't identify it. But she immediately knew what I was talking about and immediately addressed it, it was top, it was top of her mind. So it's, and, you know, no comments on what was going on or how it was going or anything like that, but definitely. I think my comment was that, um, there was a large distribution facility that was all done except for the D O T permits. And everybody in town was quite eager, they needed to get off its feet and get going. And she immediately knew what I was talking about, but, uh, and she said that it was there, but it was still, you know. Now they bounced back and there's been a lot of bouncing back and forth. Because of the newer engineers and, and what they're doing and what's coming forward and stuff that's still new to them. So that was just interesting. But anyway, um, do we have anything else to come before the meeting? I think we have a couple of things. Anybody else have anything else?
I just wanted to ask, get the updates on things like Marshall Road project, if you should have any more updates on any, if you heard it from anybody on that project.
Nope, I was asked by a couple of people at, at the polls last week about that project. Whether it was still on or not, I said, all I said was, well, we've got the approval, it just isn't being built yet.
I've been called to ask.
Obviously, I ask if you can offer us.
I, I think, I think a lot of projects, just if they were able to hold them, I think a lot of folks will wait for some prices of certain materials and stuff to come down because. I mean, I mean, you saw like some building costs on stuff went up to fifty percent.
And at one point he had trouble getting some labor and some contractors.
Yeah, but, but that project got approved.
A long time.
It was just before, and I think, um, he was having trouble getting contractors at the time.
Yeah.
Well, we also waited that boom and stayed with it.
Well, they got, they got that from one driveway because probably they had two access points and the estate said, no, one, so, yeah, they said, one, fine. That was before we gave, gave the approval.
Yeah.
Then I, my memory's gotten so bad now, I don't know if there's other projects that are sitting out there. And do we have any time other than best, you know, so. You know, if they're still subject to changes, if they have to build anything, changes in zoning laws, but, um. I, I like, Variet is have two-year kill period.
Yeah, there is no, there is no kill period.
There's no, there's no kill period on these things, so, so the other, the other one on one forty-five was the, uh, the old brown house that had taken down, he was going to pull the welding.
Yeah.
Yeah, that just, that disappeared.
Stopped.
That just disappeared.
First of all, Husky, how about the mirrors?
Um, Rob, did you have anything you wanted to talk to us about?
I guess the only thing I have to talk about, and I don't know if I need to talk about here, is the application date deadlines are not known on our website, should they be there?
Yeah.
It would be helpful.
I have people call me and that's why I'm asking that question.
I think, I think that's a great idea. Any info we can put out on the website, because everyone, I think most people feel like they, they should be able to find most, most of the information on the website. And they say, oh, they should be.
The, the meeting dates are there, but not the application deadline.
Yeah, yeah, I think, I think they should be on there.
Okay.
And along that line, do this after meeting, but the, uh, the fee structure, the, the, the single.
Mm-hmm.
Single document, um, that's not spelled by the Selectman Bill Inspector, um, fee structure, but everything else is completely. You talked about getting cleaned up to the uniform and that's something that we can pass over to the.
Sure.
File and then I would say get ours, um, the H C Cs and, and, uh, and Z D As all put on there and let. Selectman take care of adding, adding their.
Add this stuff.
Adding their fee structure to it.
And maybe see if Rob can format it for us.
Yeah, yeah, I think that would be.
Can you send to the file?
Yeah, I can send it, but, uh, it's, it's got some PDFs that I might want to.
Yeah.
Tori sent me the document, that's when they said, well, it's flexible, it's in flux and Richard Wilson's taking care of it himself.
Well, let's see if we can do what we've got done, maybe while we can get what's done.
Yeah. It's just sort of in the same structure, it's, I just basically kind of paste it in the website.
So she's putting, she's in the process of putting together some calendar things for us to be able to refer to that have all the dates on it. Our meeting dates, our public hearing nights, what's the meeting day, what's the public hearing night? And what are the, um, continuation dates, if we're continuing, and the plans need to be in by. And also what the application dates are, so.
Is there any way that we could, because we all have the town emails and stuff now, is there any way to do some type of calendar invite that we could accept for all like the planned meetings? So like I could sync and load up to my phone, so I don't have to manually input all the dates.
Oh, that'd be cool.
I would love to just be able to click and say, yeah, pair with your, pair with your calendar on your phone.
Nice.
Because there have been some times where all of a sudden Peter texts me, you coming? And I'm like, to what? We're about to start a meeting. Just got something slipped my mind.
Anything else?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Office of paper?
It is really good to have Rob in here.
Steve, take your pic thing, I.
Seven fifty-seven.
I get name tag.
Really good to have Rob.
I can take the tape?
Yeah, I think we take the tape off and check.